The lighting board was sent by emails and the Agribank Fire Press. And the co-star, our official newspaper, and the president of the building.
Thank you very much. Good evening and welcome to the June sixteenth, two thousand and twenty-five meeting of the Borough of Bell Mart Lighting Board. Please join the board with the pleasure of the audience.
The allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
Thank you very much. April roll call, please.
Mr. Meyer.
President.
Mr. Colby.
Here.
Mr. Vazio.
Here.
Mr. Simon.
Here.
Mr. Lindsay.
Here.
Mr. Wallace.
Here.
Mr. Piero.
Here.
Mr. Lemon.
Here.
Mr. Madocca.
Here.
Mr. Sharkey.
Here.
Thank you very much, April. Doug, workshop discussion, you'd like to.
Sure, we have a pretty robust agenda this evening. We do have one application from the Goodwill Fire Company. They are seeking to put an addition on their existing structure. The addition of the embroidery on thirty feet by thirty-nine point three, there's some doorways. Based what this is doing from what my understanding of the application is, if they're going to get rid of some of those. Less than visually appealing, I was up for a term. Trailers in the back, they're going to house all of their equipment, they'll have better opportunity to do that. We're going to approve some existing conditions by way of variance relief. That's the front yard setback, the side yard setback, combined side yard setbacks. These are all existing, they're not being exacerbated except to the, and the minimum block of previous coverage. The new variances as a result of the addition are going to be the minimum rear yard setback where forty feet are required and it's going to be down to ten point six feet. This is, it's on the other side of that drive area, that's with St. Rose. St. Rose, I understand actually owns the fire company. The FAR is going to go from fifty-five percent to eighty-seven point four percent. And the maximum building coverage should not exceed twenty-five percent and to be sixty-two point six percent. You might want to have some testimony as to how the site gains, how this, how those are really the only three new variances. They're asking for a number of waivers, waiver from the environmental impact, because there's been sensitive areas on the site that need stormwater management. There's technically no real increase in the pervertious surface, maybe some building lot coverage, but off the pervertious surface. They're asking not to do a traffic report, key map depiction, and we have the set map. Parking plan, they're not proposing any new parking, it's mainly existing parking, site triangles, landscape plan, drainage plan, facility plan, lighting plan, sign and thread plan, tree removal. We're proposing, we want to check how they're doing things for parking, what they're doing to plan these, those types of things. So it's really put that new addition on. I think you probably hear some testimony as to flexible C or hardship C. Realize that this is a use, you're probably eligible for the flexible C depending on the proof, because this is a use that obviously by doing these things clearly doesn't just benefit this property. Virtually being able to store your equipment and be able to provide service to the community is something that's going to benefit others and the entire community. That's your, that's your one and only application. We'll be reviewing the ordinances, twenty-five, ten. This is the multifamily, basically the twenty percent set aside ordinance. We're also, these are all interrelated, this is all thinking of these as your ordinances within parking, rental housing. So this is the formal ordinance, which is going to say now if you're going to build something that has five units or more, it's going to be twenty percent. The growth is still requiring some things to maintain that. Generally, it's not a five, it's going to be forty units or less. The next ordinance that we're going to be taking with the group action is twenty-five, A S eleven. This is create the mixed use overlay. That's just going to be along Main Street, only new side, ground level, retail, commercial, with no residents on the ground floor, the residents above, similar to what we're doing with the park, the C board. Again, if you had a five plus, you're going to have your twenty percent rental housing, that's beside the side. Units are generally two, three bedrooms. And associated uses, we call it to that, to our third bit, to that for townhouses, that actually is only on the back side. And then the final, rental housing zone, this is for block one oh five, lot eight, this is part of the settlement. I'm sure you're too quick to do this, I might say, well, this is, this is spot zoning to the extent that it's part of the settlement, partly for the housing, or for getting to do this. This is going to be basically four-story multifamily. And unlike some of the, I guess, one of the things that you had, like parts of multifamily in the past, there would also be areas where you have playing areas and those types of things, there's going to be a weird, we'll go through them, so I don't want to, I don't want to do the whole workshop again, I could tell you. There are also going to be, the park standards are going to be the R S I S, there's a time to be changing those. Handicap's all of it, it'll be run by a team. And then we have our fourth round. This is going to be our fourth round, housing element, share plan. And for the third round, now we're doing the fourth. Again, I know this is a lot for us to have to take, to understand that these time limits are being imposed upon us. Which is not something that we want to do independently. Basically, we had, early on, we had to select, or at least we were given our number, as a bar to those things, one, four thousand folks, as to what our fourth round is, that's going to be twenty-five, thirty-five, twenty, twenty-five to thirty-five. Look at those numbers, adopt those numbers, amend our master plan for those to make sure that you're aligned and the appropriate consumers would be what they prefer. If you're going to be hearing information from our four thousand housing council about the numbers. Your unmet need will be one, which are realistic development, part of potential, I think, for your commercial. So that's your, that's your workshop this evening. If you're going to go right into the fire company, if that's what you would like to do here.
Quiet, thank you all for your minutes. Yes, let's move through that and then we'll jump into the, the application. All right, as Doug noted, next on the agenda is the May nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-five meeting minutes. Can I have a motion to waive the reading and approve the minutes? Thank you, can I get a second?
Thank you.
Thank you. April.
Mr. Meyer.
Yes.
Mr. Vazio.
Yes.
Mr. Vazio.
Yes.
Have statement?
Yep.
Mr. Lawrence.
Yep.
Mr. Piero.
Yes.
Mr. Lemon.
Yes.
Or Madocca.
Yes.
Thank you. All right, let's jump right into the application, if you don't mind, at Goodwill Fire Council, six ten Seventh Avenue. Remind us that.
Anybody that's going to testify on this application, can you step forward, raise your hand? Do you think you're going to say something, you want to say something? Does or if you're sworn, don't say something, but everyone just. Raise your hand. So I'm just going to testify before the chair for holding, on your own. The last question is yes, yes. Before you start testifying, state your name, spell your last name for purpose of record. Forting so that way, you have to make the appearance, I'm striving to level with these people. When we ask the mayor and our council members to step down, it's technically the owner of the property, you guys can have a seat now. And which the marks and exhibits. I'd like to get the addition and mark the application, A one.
You're not going to be calling them.
Site plan prepared by Mike T. Cannon of April fourteen, twenty-five is A two. Exhibit A three will be the architectural plan prepared by S J. Haker of six, four, twenty-five. Exhibit A four, alphabet survey of the property prepared by Mike T. Cannon, except April fourteen, twenty-five.
It's A five, Doug, I'm sorry.
Two.
Was that A five?
A four.
A four.
Okay, was the cannon, okay.
A five is the minor land use zoning permit denial of May five, twenty twenty-five. And A six is the waiver request that, I see that there's an exhibit board.
Yep, we can mark that A seven.
A seven.
For the board, it's for the board's side.
And any other exhibits?
No, but I do have copies of, of those.
Of those copies.
Hands around.
Start those around. And then we also have exhibit T B one, which is an engineer in the court, Rose engineer, R B E, June ten, twenty twenty-five, one, six, two, eight, and four. Counsel, George.
Thanks, good evening, everyone, I'm George McHale, I'm the borough attorney for Bell Mart. I'm representing the, the Goodwill Host Company in this matter. Goodwill Host Company is part of our fire department here in the borough and the property is owned by the borough. So that's my involvement with property and I wanted to bring this before you. What they're looking to do, and Mr. Kovacs did a nice job, so I don't need to reiterate all of that. But what they're really essentially looking to do is supply the addition onto the rear so that they can have extra area for storage, take care of their air packs and things of that nature. Right now, they're, they have two, two trailers photographed over there and being passed around in the back. And it, it's not really easy to use, it's not efficient, and it doesn't look good. So they're looking to put this addition on in place of what's in the back right now. And they need some variance relief and, and site plan approval. So I have Chip Kavanaugh here, he's the president of the Goodwill Host Company, and Mike Cannon is our engineer and planner. And Jim Albertis is here, he's also a member of the Goodwill Host Company, but he's also the person who is putting this project together and has knowledge of, of the design and things of that nature. So I would just like to call Chip Kavanaugh first and he's been sworn already, so Chip, would you state your name, I know your name's not Chip, so would you state your name for the record?
It's Eugene Kavanaugh, C A V A N A G H.
Thanks, and what position do you have with the, the Goodwill Host Company?
I'm the president of the Goodwill Host Company.
And, and the Goodwill Host Company is part of the Borough of Bell Mart Fire Department, correct?
Correct.
And has been for how long?
Since nineteen oh one.
And what are you proposing to do? Why are we here?
So we really need room to store more stuff. As you can see, there's some trailers and stuff out in the back that have stuff in it. We have an SCBA air system which fills our air packs, currently it's in one of the bays. It, it has been hit once by the fire truck, because it's so tight to get in there. We also have to put some worse lockers in for guys' turnout gear. Years ago, the turnout gear used to be carried on the, on the trucks, now longer is that legal? So you have to supply everybody with a locker to put their gear. Right now, we need to put about three or four more lockers in there. So it's just like rearranging and organizing and there's SCBA bottles that have to be stored right now, they're on the floor in, in the, like, main room downstairs, so it's just clean house and make it look better and, and have a workspace in the back there that actually works by itself.
And turnout gear is the helmet, coat, boots?
Yes.
What, how do you use the, the back portion of the lot now?
It's just storage for what you see in those pictures.
Why don't we go through those photographs and could you just take us through them, you can, you can stand up and go over them.
This is exhibit A seven.
A seven. In the upper left-hand corner, that's, that's, that's the building, right?
That's the building there, yes.
What are we looking at in the center?
In the center here?
In the center of, the, the center photograph, top center photograph.
Uh, this one?
Yeah.
This is just looking more down the side of the firehouse. This is the proposed area where we want to put the addition in.
And then St. Rose School is to your east, right?
Yes.
And their parking lot and, and, and I, I guess your parking lot is to the east too, right?
Yes, the borough owns ten foot off the building here and then they have an easement for more parking with St. Rose.
Okay, in the upper right-hand corner, what are we looking at?
That's actually looking into the backyard. This is a dumpster here that we share with St. Rose, a gate to get in at these trailers and there's other stuff stored back in there right now.
Now, our plans show the dumpster inside the fence, but we're not doing that, are we?
No, because first off, the trash company won't pick it up and we do share it with St. Rose, so if we put it behind the fence, then nobody will really get at it. So it's going to go outside on the, our property, but outside the building.
So we're going to run the fence from the corner of the new structure to the, to the end of your.
Our property, but the borough's property.
Borough's property and put the dumpster outside of it?
Yes.
Okay, and down in the lower left corner, we're looking at what, the two trailers, right?
Yeah, one, two, that's our grill, and then there's just trash cans and other stuff out there.
And you actually didn't go over there and like actually make it look like that, right? That's the way it looks all the time?
No, it's been that way for quite a while. That's why you probably see this fencing and stuff up here to kind of hide what's back there.
Okay, and the new structure will take all that stuff inside?
All that stuff will be gone, yeah.
And the, the picture in the lower right-hand corner, what does that show?
This picture here?
Yeah.
That's the fence past our building that shows the property right behind us.
And it, it shows the distance that that property is from, from your property?
Yes.
And that, that's, that property actually runs on Sixth Avenue, right?
Correct.
Okay, all right, that's all I have, Chip, for the photos. So so in the category of stupid questions, what, what does the fire company do?
We answer all emergency calls in the Borough of Bell Mart.
How, how many calls do you answer approximately here?
Roughly about, now it's about two hundred and seventy calls a year.
Okay, I don't think I have anything further for Mr. Kavanaugh.
We're going to hold our questions until Mr. Cannon finishes, so we may bring Chip back up for some questions.
Do you have anything you want to say?
Thank you very much.
So I'd like to call Mike Cannon now, he's been sworn. Mike, can you give us the benefit of your credentials as an engineer and planner?
Mike Cannon, C A N O I, Cannon Group, D C, Brickton, Jersey. I'm a licensed professional engineer and planner and surveyor in the state of New Jersey. Practicing all three disciplines since the nineteen nineties, appeared before numbers four in the mall in Ocean County, I've appeared before this board several times.
We accept his credentials, thank you very much.
So the, the variances, we'll just go over, get them out of the way. On the west side, we have a west side setback. I, I put in the application one point seven five, I think Ted put that, one point seven five, it's actually one point six, which is called out by the board engineer. It's because that property is just, the, the structure is a little skewed on the property, so it is one point six according to the plans. We have a combined setback of ten point five and fifteen is required, do you want to go over these, Mike?
Yeah, if you want me to do that all. The, the variances that are required for this project. As the council stated, we have a front yard setback, existing setback, we have variance of nineteen point two feet with twenty feet is required.
We're not asking for that.
We're not, we're not asking for that, leaving existing.
Okay, well, this is what we're asking.
Well, the new variances are going to be the rear yard setback, where forty feet is required and ten point six is imposed. We have a request of variance for building coverage. Where forty-six point, twenty-five percent is allowed, forty-six point nine percent exists, and sixty-two point six percent is imposed. And we're going to see the floor area ratio variance, where fifty-five percent is required, seventy-one point seven is existing, and eighty-seven point four percent is imposed.
Mike, this is a, this is a firehouse in the R seventy-five zone, correct?
That is correct.
How, how do the R seventy-five requirements affect the use of the property as a firehouse?
Well, it restricts the use of the property with the setbacks and the parking requirements.
Is it fair, fair to say that the R seventy-five is written for single-family residential?
Yes, that's exactly, it's R seventy-five, R being residential in the, in this structure.
And doesn't fairly contemplate the, the firehouse in, in the ordinances?
Correct.
So you heard Mr. Kavanaugh testify that the, the work of the fire company is to put out fires and that they do that quite frequently. Do you think that, that that is a, a benefit to the community?
Yes, that would be a, a very, a hardly good use for the community and therefore, and it's a limited use of the house.
And how, how will the, this structure affect the air like local space in, in the general area?
In the general area, it will affect it, it will be limited in its effect. We, we have an open parking area directly to the east of the, of the property and the existing firehouse. That's hard to be built up, so we maintain that light area and open space to the east of the park.
So this, this structure, you heard Mr. Kavanaugh testify, this, this use has been at the site since nineteen oh one. Can you give me your opinion as to whether or not this addition will create any substantial impairment of the zone plan?
No, it doesn't create any substantial impairment to the public good. Variations are to such a property, the site will not have any negative drainage impacts, it's, we are not increasing the pervertage coverage. The addition is actually going over the existing parking area, so we're not increasing the pervertage, we're not generating any runoff. And with the addition of, with the addition, we have footers and meters that have the line of view structure. So we'll be able to put down straws down and direct the runoff away from adjacent residential properties. Down the, the parking lot, we use the gap to the seventh avenue. I do not find any substantial impairment to the zone orders. Again, it is a, it is a limited use and it's a hardly beneficial use and the existing block variances are not uncommon in the area. Again, we have St. Rose directly to our east base parking lot that may have the same amount of, of conditions later.
And how, what is your opinion as a planner as to the aesthetic? What, if, if there's an aesthetic benefit?
It will benefit in support of the, the variances of the positive criteria. This allows the applicant to develop the property and to use it and provides sufficient space in appropriate locations, municipal services. Again, the firehouse has existed for over a hundred years and it does reflect the desire of the vision of elements by enhancing the rear yard. Takes away those trailers that have been established and puts a new structure in.
Now, Mike, we've asked for various waivers, is that correct?
That's correct.
So could you just highlight some of the more important waivers and discuss why the waivers should be granted? The, the property is substantially built out, is that correct?
That is correct, yeah, ninety-nine percent coverage, so therefore, we are requesting a waiver from the environmental market board. And then there are most sensitive areas on site, it's also the borough's stormwater management report. We're not decreasing the pervertage area, we're not decreasing the wealth, traffic report, we're not increasing the man on the site. It's just a structure for our storage and maintenance of equipment.
There won't be extra people with this addition?
There won't be extra people, there won't be vehicles on the time.
And we looked, we looked at the parking requirements, right?
Yes, we did.
And there's nothing that really fits the firehouse directly?
There is no firehouse designation in the parking requirements, so it's all. But we do have an easement on U J. Sabat to the east, the St. Rose parking lot, where the availability of fifteen parking spaces. And actually, two of them are striped as handicap spaces up against that. So we haven't had any problem with parking in the best and since we're not putting any more demand on the, on the site, we don't anticipate any parking.
There's no need for site triangles and in the landscaping plan, there's no place to landscape, correct?
You don't have any landscape on site right now, we're not taking that out, we're not proposing for that. Drainage plan, again, we're not increasing the pervertage area, we can put those utilities on the, on the structure and direct it into the street. The utility plan, all exhibit utilities are just empty, we're not proposing any new utilities. Lighting plan, we're not proposing any additional lighting. Signs and striping, again, we're just utilizing the parking lot, I'm saying that, we're not proposing any changes to the treaty rule or planning application to change tuition. Not proposing any landscape or changes.
Did you receive the report from the board engineer?
Yes, I did.
Can we turn to the technical review section and can you take us through that? I, I think, Mr. Chairman, if you would allow, Mr. Kavanaugh probably can discuss the, the projected scope of work and timeline.
Work and timeline, please.
So we're on a little bit of a crunch, we want to get this done prior to the kids getting back into school, so we don't interfere with St. Rose. So our plan is to, is to get this done by mid-August or the end of August at the latest. St. Rose also has a plan to repave their parking lot, park two, so we're trying to get all this crammed in in a very short period of time.
And the, the chain link fence, that's going to run from the corner of your new structure to the northern boundary, right? We discussed that, and then the dumpster's going to be outside that.
It'll be new chain link?
Yes, that's going to have to be the.
So the, I, I can stipulate that for number three, it appears that there, there's a difference between that door, but the door is, is the same door. It's going to be the same door that's there now, they're not changing the door. It does look different on the plans, but that, that's, that's the, the idea, to keep the same man door there now into the, the new addition.
So which one is more accurately depicted?
The one that's not in the demolition sketch, demolition plan. That's more accurate, correct?
Correct. The one that's not in the demolition?
Right.
Okay.
I didn't know what the other plan was, so I couldn't say.
Yeah, it just says proposed first floor, I'm assuming it was the architect, you're right.
Yeah, it does, the architect's plan, yeah, I'd be happy to.
Which one?
And we, I think we handled the refuse question. Number four, can you describe exactly what that enclosure, could it be the same enclosure or not, it's not an enclosure, it's really just a dump?
That's, that's right, we're not enclosing it.
Okay.
Describe how big it is and how often pickup comes?
I'm not sure how often it is, but it's the, the dumpster that we have on site.
Oh, okay.
It does get picked up every day, it's, I'm going to say it's roughly probably about a two-yard dumpster. But it gets picked up every day.
So the reason that you can't put it inside is because they can't pick it up inside and St. Rose needs access to it?
Yeah, St. Rose, we share that with St. Rose.
And that's probably more of the issue than the pick, because they could always roll it out to pick it up.
Well, when we, at one point, we did put it behind the fence and all you had to do was open the fence to take it out and the trash company didn't refuse to come get it.
But, but it's a shared dumpster between you and St. Rose.
Correct.
Is there any recyclable or is it separate?
There's some recyclable cans out there, yes.
Okay.
But separate from the dumpster. I think you might be able to see there's a couple of little cans, I don't know if you can see it in the picture, but I think there's two or three blue cans in there for recyclers.
Okay, that's the usual recyclables?
Yeah, that's mainly used by St. Rose, we usually take ours up to the Borough of Norman, problem.
Number five and six have to do with parking, I think we touched on that, unless there's other questions?
I do have a quick question, there's two spots that were designated, are they, I know there's a ten-foot easement or a ten-foot setback that the borough owns the property. Is that where the two spots are in addition to the fifteen in the easement?
Yeah, the, the two spots are the spots up east on the side of the parking lot, right up against Seventh Avenue, they're, they're one, they're, they're.
So pronouncing the government across.
Now, I, I understand that, but there's also two, I'm assuming are separate and apart from the fifteen that are on that side. I know it's not calling out A yet.
It doesn't, yeah.
I know this item does. I know this item does, but is it just the ADA that he's referencing, the engineer?
Uh, yes, yeah. Those are the two spots that he's referencing and they are included within the space.
Okay. Do you anticipate any increased sedimentary sewer flow as requested under the settlement?
No, we do not anticipate any, there's no sewer flow. We're not closing any bathrooms or any, any sinks in the, in the addition.
I think we handle the UVA question at eight? And number ten stipulate too? So I, I think that's all that we have, correct? Okay, that's all that we have, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Captain.
I'm going to ask for a few questions and I'll turn it over and roll down the board to see if there are other questions.
Is the rear area behind the firehouse paved or is that gravel?
No, it's paved, it's paved right now.
It's all paved?
Yes.
Yeah, I couldn't tell from the picture. And then the drainage you said will be downspouts that'll be running down the side of the building out to second, right? I think that's the way the parking lot pitches?
Yes, it does. It'll go back to the rear of the property out to Seventh Avenue.
Okay. When you spoke of light and air, what's to the west and north? I know you mentioned to the east is the parking lot. I would say it's not in that area, but to the north and to the west, can we speak to that?
To the north, there is a residential property, a shed up against the rear property line, so they need to have their yard requirements, so we're not affected by them with the, the runoff that comes up.
And they have a shed and then their yard, then their house?
Yes.
And that's what's shown in that photograph, the, the distance?
Yes.
Right, yeah.
The one bottom right in the center.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Is, the building's not going to take that entire footprint, so it'll be perimeter, is that going to be concrete walkway, is around the three sides, is that going to be stone?
No, we'll probably make that stone. We're going to take up all the paved area that's there and we'll probably put, end up, put it stone in just so that it doesn't actually ruin anything along with it.
Right, with no turf or anything.
So actually, we, we will be reducing the previous coverage, so as I was stating, you know, my testimony, that it was having remained the same, we may actually reduce it by.
Because of that stone, it's perfect.
That's just going to be in the rear of the structure, right?
The rear and the, the two feet on the side.
Yeah, it'll be a small border around.
Okay, so, okay. All right, let's roll down the board. Rick, any questions?
Just curious, did you give any thought or feasibility of putting a second story on that one-story part of it as opposed to building, building out and back?
This stuff that we're going to put the back, like the air compressor and the storage banks for, for that, there's no way to put that on the second floor.
Okay. My only question is, has it been thought out what's going to happen with two existing trailers?
I currently own both those trailers.
Okay.
And own them for the firehouse.
Okay.
So I'm going to get my two trailers back?
Okay, so there's a benefit there. So they're not going to stay on site, are you sure?
Yeah, no, they're not.
Okay. Thank you for loaning those to the boroughs.
Thanks, Chris. The, the trash area, you're not building any kind of trash enclosure, just going to be fencing it in? Is there, I mean, do you know what that is going to be from the rear yard setback? You have, you have it drawn out for no dimension from the rear yard setback to a trash area?
It's drawn out behind the, behind the addition. However, it won't be there. It's going to be moved out in front of the addition and probably in, down on the side of the.
Oh, oh, so it's not going to be where it's.
It's not going to be where it is.
Okay, that was basically going to be where I was going to suggest is get it back away from the rear yard.
Yeah, but that's where it's going to end up.
If they move up all the way to the proposed ramp, I guess.
Yeah, go all the way to, move where that.
Yeah, there's a man door, there's, so there's a garage door and a man door, that right covers both of them?
So it'll, it'll just be the, just, just move it.
Just move further. Okay, that was important. You mentioned no, no lighting improvements, but I'd have to imagine, I mean, your, your lighting plan doesn't show any exterior lights at all, not even on the outside of the man door, so it's going to require a light code, code wise?
Whatever the code requires.
One for sure, just make sure, I mean, that's going to be facing St. Rose, but also facing the rear yard of, basically, east of property, across parking lot, but just make sure that's not going to interfere with their light, their, any overlay into their property.
It'll just be essentially porch lighting, residential porch lighting, it's going to be a spotlight.
I think, I think that's going to be important.
Standard, yes. Just make sure that it's a standard residential light. If it's any kind of spotlight or, or, you know, aggressive light, we have shields on it. It'll be low.
Will you agree to make that a condition of the application?
Everything that's on the building now on that side is street down.
Right, I just want to make sure if it is some type of commercial red light, we'll show that, we just want.
I did want to make sure you get your testimony correct in saying we're not adding lights and then you do, because there's definitely going to need a, going to need a light on those two. The chain link, and then in the rear, you know, are you planning, you mentioned gravel, that was my question. So you're planning on doing gravel. Since you're doing gravel and not, I know you're not improving, you know, increasing the previous coverage, but there's a chance to make an improvement. Can we look into doing a recharge pit in that gravel, using that gravel area as a recharge pit to take the load out of that parking lot? You know, just take a load out of the town, you know, even, you know, sometimes we do twenty-foot, twelve-inch pipes under gravel and then you could use it for all your needs.
That's why we would propose stone instead of favors or something like that.
Yeah, but I think he's trying to control the runoff coming off, running the leaders into the, the leader drain there. Most of the preferate light.
Runoff in this area is slow and consistent as this park. It's paved, when you add, you know, these buildings all coming in one gutter, all coming in one liter onto a schoolyard, you know, essentially, that is really, you know, parking and whatnot. You know, I'd like to see that as, as a more of a collection.
To explore.
Yes.
Using, using what we're referring to be that the applicant will consult with and follow the direction of the borough engineer concerning recharge to try to capture as much as they can on site, so it's not greater than the traditional.
Well, stipulate that.
That is so stipulated, so stipulated.
If you have one more question?
All right, thank you. Phil?
I've got no questions other than to say that I do love the property. I don't remember the last time I looked at it. I understand the purpose of the gravitator wall. It's really lots of stuff to see I'm in there and I understand what I'm dealing with. It's an observation, not a question.
Thank you. Brett, any questions? Louis?
The, I'm curious what the purpose of the garage door is on the east side of the addition that we're putting up there?
Yep, the new addition.
So part of what's going back there is the SCBA model storage system for our heirs and we're going to have to have them taken out of there. They're so many of them like this made of that, just to make it easier to get in and out, basically, to be able to store stuff in there and get it in and out.
All right, and any, what's, the, the SCBA, the compressor, is there a noise issue? Because I guess we're going to be going back to the, the house adjacent to the west side of it.
Currently, the vent goes out to the house to the west of us now, up further. I think if, when we move it back there, it'll be less, because it's right in between the very narrow part of the building, I think it'll be less back there. There's also a muffler on the system that helps to keep it down pretty low.
Do you know what hand, what the decimal?
No, no. We've never, nobody's ever complained, so I don't know what it is, I'll tell you the truth, but it, we have a big bank storage system so that we don't run the compressor a lot. That was to try and make the compressor last longer, because they're quite expensive. So we put a big storage system in there, so I would say if that compressor runs maybe once a month, it'd be a lot.
Okay. Are you storing anything else in, in that area, any other hazardous chemicals or?
No, no hazardous stuff.
Propane cylinders in the back of the?
Um, they probably still stay outside the building, you know, right outside the door because the, we really don't want propane cylinders inside.
Yeah, that's why. That'd be embarrassing. It'd be embarrassing. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Charles?
Thank you.
Mr. Bell here, any questions?
Yes, just, just when you, you discussed the parking and obviously the, no need for site triangles, because you already have something marked out, you know, for the, for the trucks when they come out, in and out, and there will be no parking there. But how many people, when a call is answered, how many people respond and how many of those spots are filled?
It really depends during the day, very few.
Okay.
Nighttime, if it's a working farm, we'll probably get like nine, ten cars there.
Okay.
But the rest of the time is usually four to five.
So you've not really had to use any parking on the street, it can be contained in that, in that area?
It always pretty much stayed in the parking lot.
And the next.
Unless moved though, then that changes a little bit.
The existing building is constructed what?
The existing building is block.
What is the addition going to be built on?
It's going to be a superior wall, which is a metal, a pre-fab metal and, uh, actually a wall.
In terms of coloration, you're going to try to keep that the same coloration or is it going to be different? I'm just trying to get an idea of the visual, because we really don't have what the exterior facade is going to look like and what the roofing materials will be.
The yard's had a plan showing siding on the, on the walls.
Okay, same coloration?
We'll stipulate the same color.
Let's hope not.
Well, no, I mean, I, I.
Because it's brick, I don't know how, that siding would look pretty tough.
That's, that's pretty face on the building right now.
What's that?
That's brick face on the existing.
Yeah, so I'm saying, I don't think you want the siding to match the red brick.
I'm just asking what they're going to do so that then you can decide from, as a, from a planning perspective, if that's something that's.
Yeah, I know the, the plant, I didn't realize it was a steel stud structure, but it does call out siding. I'm assuming it's a vinyl siding, I think.
Probably vinyl, so probably do like the second floor.
Yeah. So if it's consistent with that, I think it'll.
Confirming that it's vinyl siding on the second floor currently?
Yeah, top of the second floor.
All right. Something consistent with that would be a good planning recommendation.
Other questions, Captain?
No further questions.
Ms. Bell, I see you're here.
I'm not here for.
Not official capacity?
No, I'm here for the, your next step.
Okay, all right, just wanted to check, any comments, I saw you were all right.
Is that all for presentations from the applicant?
That's all I have.
Okay, thank you very much. If you'd like to make a comment about this application, please step forward to the microphone, state your name, spell it, and provide your street address.
Seeing none, I'll close the motion. And I'll ask for a motion to approve the application.
I, I actually have a resolution prepared. I prepared two, just in case it didn't.
Oh, you did?
By, I've been asked to sort of, I think the term used to be turbo resolution.
Okay.
So if you'll bear with me, I'll give you two.
Please.
Before September, if you can hit a resolution.
Yes, well, I'm going to make the resolution.
Yeah, there are a couple of conditions we need to slide in there, but let's move it.
Yep. As Borough Belmar Planning Board President, we grant minor site plan approval with variance available to leave from the property located in block six to five, block sixteen, six ten, Seventh Avenue. Whereas Google Hose Company here after the applicant has received permission from the owner to proceed with the development application for the property located in block six to five, block sixteen to show the official tax map of Borough Belmar located at six ten, Seventh Avenue with Borough Belmar County, Monmouth State, New Jersey. And whereas the applicant made application for minor site plan approval, the variance available to construct a one-story addition at the rear of the existing building, the addition will be thirty feet by thirty-nine point three feet and will contain an internal doorway to the existing building and a one-end door and one overhead door. Whereas the applicant seeks the following relief, these are existing conditions, we usually approve those anyways, the lease will records appear. Minimum front yard setback for twenty feet or required in nineteen point two exists and are proposed. Minimum side yard setback for five feet or required in one point six exists and are proposed. Minimum combined side yard setback for fifteen feet or required in nine point nine feet exists and are proposed. Maximum lot and purview coverage will not exceed fifty percent and ninety-nine point seven percent exists and is proposed. Various conditions or non-conditions, minimum rear yard setback for forty feet or required at ten point six feet are proposed, maximum building, if they are, fifty-five percent and eight point seven, eighty-seven point four percent is proposed, maximum building coverage will not exceed twenty-five percent and sixty-two point six percent is proposed. And whereas the applicant seeks the following waivers from the checklist, item number ten, environmental impact statement, number eleven, formal management report, number twelve, traffic report, number nineteen, EMAP protection area within five hundred feet, thirty, EMAP showing area within two hundred feet, thirty-two, parking plan, thirty-three, site plan, thirty-four, landscape plan, thirty-eight, drainage plan, thirty-nine, utility plan, forty, lighting plan, forty-one, siding and striping plan, forty-three, tree removal or planting applications of state recognition. And whereas, with the exception of the variance in our waiver relief sought, here above the applicant of the application of laws reforms and requirements of Borough Belmar in any disorderness in all respects, whereas after proper notice of public hearing, the application was heard on June sixteenth, twenty twenty-five, and whereas the board considered. Exhibit A one, application. Exhibit A two, site plan prepared by Michael Cannon. Exhibit A three, architectural planning prepared by CJ Acorn. Exhibit A four, topographic survey of property prepared by Pam. Exhibit A five, minor name use permit slash denial, dated twenty twenty-five. Exhibit A six, waiver letter passed June second, twenty twenty-five. Exhibit A seven, photo board consisting of six images marked as A seven. Exhibit PB one, engineer reported to Borough Engineer, dated June twenty-five, with the signature of James Forrest, as well as testimony by her on behalf of the applicant from Chip, from Eugene Chip Cavanaugh, Mike C. Cavanaugh, as well as private presentation and/or information presented on the Borough Engineer and Borough Planner. Whereas after careful vicinity given presented to it, the board is going to follow the following findings of fact. One, the applicant has made application for minor site plan approval with variance and waiver relief. He's struck a one-story addition at the rear of the existing building as described here above. Two, the site comprises of one lot on the north side of Seventh Avenue approximately one hundred and fifty feet east of the intersection of Main Street and Seventh Avenue. Property is adjacent to St. Rose Grammar School parking lot slash play yard and is across the street from St. Rose High School. Three, the existing lot currently contains a firehouse consisting of a two-story brick and frame front stretch section and one-story framed section in the rear with paved storage area surrounded by chain link fencing located to the rear of the one-story segment. Four, the applicant proposes using the additional area to store, maintain, and resupply the approximately twenty-five air packs and associated bottles that the applicant is on site. Location of the equipment into the building will allow the applicant to remove the two-story trailers and apartment located at the A bearing to the rear of the property. Five, the property is located in the R seventy-five senior family residential zone district. The ordinance includes municipal services and facilities as permitted use in the zone. Facility is a firehouse, which is interpreted to be a municipal facility that is a permitted use. The expanded firehouse is also permitted use. Six, the applicant has requested variance relief and checklist waivers identified here above based upon the applicant's submission, testimony, and recommendation of the Borough Planner and here, the board funds the applicant as net earned proof to support granting various, granting waiver sought or finds special reasons exist to grant the variance we have sought. The company uses the property for its firehouse. The company has existed at the site for over a hundred years and provides volunteer firefighting services to the community, efficient and effective delivery of those services, liable to health, safety, welfare of the borough. The existing structure provides limited storage areas. The addition will permit the company to store, maintain, and resupply the approximately twenty-five air packs and associated bottles on site. Addition allows the company to remove the existing on-site trailers, allowing for improved design aesthetic or approved design aesthetic for the adjoining property, strict compliance with the zone goal standards, create a hardship to the company in its service role, though variance and waiver relief is sought for this application. The board finds the purpose of Borough Belmar's zoning and development regulations will be advanced by this development and variance and waiver relief can be granted without substantial detriment to the public good, now therefore being resolved. Any word of the Borough Belmar hereby approving the application for minor site plan approval with variance and waiver relief subject to the following conditions. Publication by the applicant of her notice of this decision and the official news. Publication by the applicant of her notice of this decision in the official newspaper serving the Borough of Delmar and the turn of proof application to Secretary of Planning Board. B, they involve taxes and assessments to date, if any. No building permits or certificates of documents here to be issued until proof is furnished to the Secretary of the Planning Board that there are no taxes or assessments due or to link on the property in question. C, applicant shall develop the site in a manner consistent with testimony presented, plans submitted, and consistent with board's findings of fact. Decision of the board is based upon the accuracy of the records made by the applicant, his presentation of board, as well as drawings, renderings, surveys, site plans referred to during the hearing, and when approved, and when approved, condition upon substantial compliance of the course that documents, statements, and amendments agreed to. Advocate has agreed as a condition of its approval to ensure that the lighting existing on the outside in this man door shall be shielded and limited to a residential lighting type so as not to impact upon properties in and about the area. Advocate has further agreed that it will consult with Borough Engineer to determine whether or not the area can be contained in the rear inside the enclosed, inside the fenced enclosed area to act as a recharge for the additional needs and concerns running off of the addition. The applicant has further agreed that the exterior facade of the addition shall be consistent with the vinyl siding on the second floor of the existing structure. The applicant shall comply with any and all other requirements of the Borough of Delmar and the government subdivision as set forth in the laws, ordinance, and regulations and the above referenced agreement. Set forth in the laws, ordinance, and regulations, and the above referenced agreement will obtain any current, applicant will obtain any permits between the two boroughs. Be further resolved or copied by this resolution certified by the Secretary of the Planning Board, be a true copy, be forwarded to the Borough Clerk, the Borough Destruction Official, the Borough Engineer, the Borough Tax Collector, the Borough Tax Assessor, the Labor and Sewer Department, the Borough Attorney, and the applicant herein. Be further resolved that this resolution be, and here it is effective on June sixteen, twenty twenty-five. I'd ask that somebody move that resolution with those conditions?
Offer.
Mr. Meyer?
Second study.
Second study.
Mr. Meyer?
Yes.
Mr. Caponi?
Yes.
Mr. Delazio?
Yes.
Mr. Minter?
Yes.
Mr. Reddy?
Yes.
Mr. Lomis?
Yes.
Mr. Pierre?
Yes.
Thank you, everyone. Thank you for comparing that and reading it. My pleasure. Sure.
All right. Thank you very much. All right.
We're up for ordinance.
Our board.
He's up for ordinance.
Next up is a review of ordinance twenty twenty-five dash ten, twenty twenty-five dash eleven, and twenty twenty-five dash twelve.
Okay, this is again, any thought on the nation account for the Borough? Mayor Council had a liberal reading, they are obliged to assist in voting for not particularly inactive or active for thirty-five days, unless enough to present the actual return. Generally, our role is that we're not intending to seem consistent with the master plan under the development regulations. We open for us, even if there's something that, even if you find it's consistent, but you have initial concerns, we can repair the, I will prepare a light in the Mayor Council to pause and what happens when this is allowed, so that if there's any concerns or changes that they want to make, they can. They are not obliged to make any changes. What that, what occurs, even if you find it inconsistent, is that that heightens the vote, I mean, Mayor Council, if they pursue it, if they continue with that. That does not say that Mayor Council have not, I think every time when there weren't some of the concerns that were expressed, which needed to be addressed. Twenty twenty-five ten is the multifamily ordinance, it's going to basically say that basically put that affordable housing mandate into our ordinance now.
Twenty twenty-five ten is the twenty percent set aside, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
I mean, in shorthand fashion, that's the best way that I can put it out there. It's not applied to pretty decent settled applications, it's not applied to a unit of four or less, but where you have five or more, this would be twenty percent set aside. That's, in a sense, the substance of that particular ordinance. Any questions?
The part C of the section one, part C. I've read that like three or four times, and is it saying that it only, this ordinance only applies if we permit something that is at least twice the permitted.
Previously permitted.
That, I think you're reading correctly, it says, generally, anything that was already permitted, it's not going to impact, but if that limited residential dwelling, it says, creating this section was adopted, this requirement shall only apply if the Borough or the Borough's Planning Board, all right, Borough, Borough's Planning Board, permits an increase in approval and developable gross residential density to at least twice the permitted approvable and or developable gross residential density as infected date of this ordinance.
So is that saying that in order for this twenty percent, meaning it's already set aside to apply?
To something already approved.
Okay, okay.
That's the way I'm reading it.
New applicants can disapply. This is something that's been approved.
Okay.
And if you're making a change that's twice.
We can bring that back in.
We can bring it back in and bring the twenty percent set aside back in.
Only if it's double. So if you have fourteen units and they're going down to twenty, we don't get it.
Correct.
That's, that's the way I'm reading that.
Why does that make sense?
I can't say that.
I'm planning on, I'm scared.
Doesn't, I'm saying that that's, that's the way the ordinance reads at this point in time, it says nothing, this section, but also, if you take it with a D, nothing precludes this section from the Borough, the Borough of Delmar Planning Board from imposing affordable housing set aside development, not required to be set aside pursuant to this paragraph.
I read that paragraph, and I like it, I read that paragraph that is, even if it's a four-unit building, we could impose twenty percent.
If you follow, if you follow those guidelines, that's the service statutory section. So in that instance, if it does fit within there, you may even go back to, to address I of C, although I'm not reading that ordinance as that, it's a tactic to go for the less than you go.
I view that as, as an opportunity to revisit a project, as Brett was referencing. If it's something that was a multifamily product, I'm viewing this, you know, five or more, and they came in, but it wasn't a full two times, you know, two times density increase, I think this gives you the opportunity to request affordables. If, you know, leveraging D as that clause.
D, D.
I don't know, I personally don't view this as going after a building with four units or less, I think that's kind of a, you know, the minimum threshold that they've set in the ordinance, I think it's, this gives us that flexibility for something that's, that mid-level density that you referenced in the example, like where it's fourteen and a permitted approved application, and they come back in for twenty, this is where you pull D out and say, look, we're going to look for some affordable, even though you didn't go to twenty-eight, we're going to look for some, we're going to look for some affordable here.
As to how that plays out, I can't, I can't tell.
Yeah, I guess my only concern with that clause is that it's up for challenge.
Yeah, and we can address that, we can address that concern, but again, I don't know that that takes it out of our main line of, is this consistent with the master plan development regulations? I think we still find it is, but if this is a concern that we're setting ourselves for, up for challenge, we can certainly raise that issue to Mayor Council, say, you know, how, how is this going to work if it is an increase but not an increase of, of portion?
That's the concern, do we end up in litigation with the developer somewhere? That would be my only.
That never happens. No.
I just, I feel like it opens doors that you don't need to open.
And again, I'm not.
There's two sides, right? I appreciate the flexibility, right, but at the same time, how do you control this being a, a potential?
And I don't know whether, and I don't want to put Mayor Council on the spot as to why this provision is there, but, you know, you could, you could exist without it and just only capture those things going forward, but I think it's an opportunity to try to capture something that's already coming in for approval, someone wants to come in for amendment.
So my, my other thing is that if you already have approval and only use fifteen, and you want to go to seventeen, well, now you have to go back and comply with this ordinance that's current, and you have more than five, so you, we can enforce that.
Yeah, I think, I think it's, I think it's a triggering mechanism to say, look, along with your, along with your thoughts, I have to do it for X, now Y gives me more than five units, but not up to the double standard of this, I, I'm not sure.
Maybe what we do here is, maybe this is an opportunity, maybe we have some language in here that gives the board the ability to impose a pro-rated portion if you did not achieve the full double. In other words, if somebody comes in and they had ten, they didn't come in and they came in for fifteen, or they came in for, you know, eighteen, we could impose some pro-rated portion of the twenty percent set aside for those that exceed.
Certainly doesn't hurt to.
I, I just think, if you can put, if you can put some control around it, like a pro-rated portion, now you have some kind of metric that you have in there that you can fall back on. So I just feel like this is really for something that's in between zero and double, that you can pro-rate. I don't know what others think about that, but I think a pro-rated approach may be a way to, to kind of work through any litigation.
Wouldn't it give us more flexibility if we were, if we were just moving on in the first place and just removing it?
Well, I, I'm seeing this as something, that's approved, if someone wants to come in and build at a great event. It wouldn't be, it wouldn't be the first time that.
It's not new out there.
An approval comes in before it is built, it's either sold to another developer, development, and that developer comes in and says, I want to do this, and I didn't have the affordable housing requirement.
I guess my point is.
Now saying.
Why do we have to define double? Can't we just say general? If you're coming back to us, guess what? If you're coming back to us, you got to comply now.
Twenty percent.
Yeah. You want to come back, no problem, we'll give you that.
Again.
I think the other side of this, guys, is that this ordinance is going to probably move through pretty quickly. And there's not going to be an application in front of us between the time that this draft goes through and it's finalized by Mayor Council, so we may be doing a lot of break damage here for nothing, because the reality is, we're probably not going to see an application coming through. For existing permitted and expanded density.
This is, this, I think, is intended to address something that approval, sort of in the pipeline to be built, but someone comes back and there's a different application. Again, you don't have to argue with me. I will.
I'm going to ask Mayor Council a question, like, is this, is this to protect, like, I'm just, anything with the, through the three developers with the multi-units, the three coming?
No, it's not to protect them, it's just if.
Not protect them, I meant to protect us from them.
It's basically so we have rent cover and contingency, right?
Right.
I don't know what, again, but probably not going to be a lot of existing approved projects that are coming.
There's only one that we've approved in the last three years.
Exactly, and we are sort of, we do have the cross, there does have to be a lot of new revenue cover, if something was going to change.
Was the eleven, the eleven behind?
You had Kapalco, probably, right?
Right, that's fourteen.
Those are the two buildings, I don't know that, I, I don't recall that it was.
So for example, that, this paragraph would be addressing something like that?
That's, that's what I'm seeing.
Okay.
And the triggering mechanism isn't that if I want something, I want to change just one thing, and now, let's take the other, let's take the, the simple case, I'm approved for fourteen, I'd like to get, I'd like to get fifteen, and you say, well, now it's all affordable because you're coming back.
Twenty percent.
And I think that, well, I'm just saying, I think this mechanism is saying, well, we'll.
Consider it.
Well, no, we won't, we won't be mandating unless you're past that triggering mechanism. Because, and again, and I'm not trying to argue developer side here, but a lot of planning goes into this, and if I thought I, you know, you're not, I think, I think the reaction to it, people will be fine with throwing my application, as opposed to getting an opportunity to get more affordable housing if they go up the density. So I think there's, there I see, I can see a win-win situation, because there's something for the developer, there's something for the Borough.
And that's why I thought the pro-rated approach was the best, because if you hit them with an undue burden, I agree with you, Doug, they're going to pull the application.
Why, why?
So why not have a pro-rated portion, so this way, if it's somewhere between zero and double, you may get one or two affordables out of it that we don't have, that'll go towards our fourth round, that we need thirty-eight or whatever we're going to need, so, well, five's supposed to be amended.
Seven.
So that's why I'm thinking pro-rated. And I think that's, we've got to keep in mind, that's the intent, that's the spirit of this, to try to get affordables.
Yes.
Good.
So I think the pro-rated approach is probably a good suggestion.
It would be detained in the writing, but I'm told ask to be returned to Mayor Council's hearing.
Okay. All right, next.
Twenty-five eleven, this is an ordinance amended in chapter forty, article five, zone district, suburban recruiting, whose zone is, it's going to be the mixed-use overlay or the MU dash O. The purpose of the mixed-use overlay zone is to allow for a combination of mixed uses on Main Street, including commercial, retail, and residential uses. So my, in addition to the mandatory set aside, my view of this, and I am ready to be standing, to stand corrected, is that it takes a lot of the developer's standards that are in the scene for it, and puts those down, down, you decide.
And this goes all the way down Main?
Well, this, it does not seem to limit it to an area, it says, is to, along Main Street, including commercial, retail, and residential uses. Mixed uses, retail, commercial on ground floor, residential units above, no residents on ground floor, townhouses are permitted in the rear of the mixed-use building. So let's, let's, let's stop there for a second. Let's take an application we recently had with regard to, across the way where we had townhouses, but now they're only into the back as opposed to in the front along Main Street, so there's, there's a limitation on the development there. Any mixed-use development with five or more dwelling units requires a mandatory twenty percent set aside for affordable housing. Affordable housing units shall be two and three-bedroom units, so under this mixed-use overlay, you're not going to have a one-bedroom unit. The other permitted, now again, this is, it's designed the same way, permitted uses essential services, municipal facilities, so in addition to those types of things, municipal facilities, parking lots, public parks, walkways deemed necessary and appropriate by the governing body, so those are other permitted uses in this area. Commercial business, all non-residential uses permitted in the Seaport be developed and planned, so if you took a look at your commercial uses that are in the Seaport plan, they will also be permitted here, but this is designed to be a mixed use, so if you just plan to have a non-residential use akin to what the Seaport has, they're permitted. Realize that if you didn't put something in like this, all you would be permitted to put in that overlay zone would be mixed residential, here this provides opportunities for others. Now, again, because this is an overlay, it doesn't jump right out at you, but because this is an overlay, depending on which zone you are in as you go down Main Street, right? Your CD one, CD two, your CD one and CD two, it appears, still exist, okay?
But you have the flexibility.
Because it's an overlay, it's not a replacement of those zones.
Right, but you have the flexibility of.
This is a new development opportunity for you to do that, and again, and I, I'm not going to render this, this, this opinion, I'll leave that for somebody else who does the affordable housing, but this, I think, can be used also. for somebody else who does affordable housing, but this I think can be used also when you're going into, realize, when we get to the fourth round, we're going to be proposing this, I think there's still opportunities for objectors to come out even though we proposed a plan for the fourth round?
No.
No.
Well, if this plan is adopted before June, if the fourth round plan is adopted by June 30th, which will be a remain few minutes hopefully, then we have immunity from.
Okay, so I, I would, I would gently suggest, and again, I'm not going to offense by a channel, but this kind of ordinance would help you in insulation getting through fourth round. Okay? Again, permitted accessory uses, off-street parking and loading facilities, classic stuff that you have in your commercial areas, signs conforming to the Division of Development Regulations, fences, wall, conditional uses. Again, but this is, this is a quirk and it's, I'll take some time to develop this because this gets a little bit into the weeds. Conditional uses, other uses on-site approval of the planning board, townhouse attached with individual connecting walls, bed and breakfast, okay? Why does this become somewhat important? In some of our other bed and breakfasts, it's a conditional use in a residential zone? Yeah, I'm going to go there. I'm going to, I'm going to show you my nerd, all right? Here's, when you have a conditional use and there's a specific standard in the conditional use that you don't need, it's a heightened variance standard, okay? Because what you basically said of the conditional use is, this isn't your traditional use, we wouldn't normally put a bed and breakfast along Main Street, but if you meet these other criteria, okay? It can fit, if you don't meet these other criteria, then you have a heightened variance standard, okay? It's a conditional use standard. So that, and in, and in that instance, it gets a little, because, because under our old bed and breakfast, you needed a parking spot, I believe, for each and every unit that you had in there. Here, it's just going to be, it's just going to be the standard. It's just going to be the usual RSIS standards, okay? Yeah, I went there, I shouldn't have gone there, everyone. Okay? So, and your bulk requirements are there, 7,000 square feet, lot frontage 50 feet, lot depth 50, sorry, lot width.
Can I comment on that?
Lot depth 120, minimum front yard zero, so it can be up, three and a half stories at the street line, and again, we want to make sure that you know, this is street line, not curb front, street line has a specific definition, street line. Four stories have set back 12 feet from the set, from that, so what does that allow you to do? As you go a little higher, but you can stagger back.
That's similar to what we did across the street, so.
Again, street line, I don't want to think of, you know, curb front or sidewalk, it's street line, so it's measured a little bit different. Minimum lot coverage 80%. Off-street parking, all residential houses are provided with residential standards, non-residential parking rule.
Should that say non-residential use rather than parking?
You know, I think it should be non-residential use, I think you're right.
Right. Not wrong, non-residential.
And I think we may want to make it clear there how they're characterizing the bed and breakfast. Because, well, think of it this way, that the bed and breakfast, the way we traditionally define them is that there's going to be an owner-operator living on site.
See, I, I don't necessarily agree with this one, by the way. Change the word out, use, but I think they should be required to have some off-street parking. We've asked thus far anybody who has come in with a mixed use, whether it's Kapalco or whether it's, you know, Taylor that was looking at the one across the street, he did have to put a parking stall in for that thousand square feet of retail or office or whatever he's doing there. So I almost feel like this one.
Well, well, you see, here's, 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 here's what I, I think is a tactic, because I think it should be non-residential use, but not required to have off-street parking. Realize, again, overlay, CD1, CD2, in certain instances, don't require them to have off-street, I'm sorry.
Yeah, they are not required to have off-street parking.
Commercial spaces, off-street.
So, and I'd like to know how, in this instance, having, giving you the explanation I just provided with regard to a bed and breakfast, how do you characterize the bed and breakfast on Main Street that's developed under this overlay? Because the traditional bed and breakfast standard was that there was going to be an owner occupied, so always, so that's going to be a residential, hyper-protecting residential use, but you may not always, but it, it sort of has the commercial end to it because that is rooms for lack, if you will.
Should we exclude?
They want to just.
Should we exclude bed and breakfast? If we change this to non-residential use, will not require, not be required to have off-street parking with the exception of bed and breakfast?
Again, it's, it's not for us to necessarily rewrite the ordinance with Mayor and Council, other than to highlight this issue, because down the line, somebody's going to ask us, well, no, they won't ask us, they'll go, this will put the applicant who's bringing, nobody who built a bed and breakfast in, if they don't agree with the interpretation of the zoning officer as to the parking, it's going to go to the zoning board adjustment for interpretation.
Correct.
Right?
So I'd rather avoid having a drop in zoning.
And I agree.
Let's make it our suggestion.
Yep.
That obviously the wording would be changed from parking to use, but maybe we exclude. You know, the other thing, Doug, as I asked earlier, is we should include somewhere in here the limits of where the MU-O zone is going to be included. In other words, is it all lots facing Main Street that are but Main Street? Because we always have the challenge of the lots that roll the corners, right? So you want to make sure that it's a lot abutting Main Street, and if it's, you know, from X street to X street, let's at least put some framework around.
So frontage on Main.
And from whatever, whatever.
And then maybe the area of possible.
Yeah. I, I think it's from 5 to 16.
At the north end.
Is that the intent?
At the north end.
Yeah, so 5 to 16.
Describe that for sure.
We already got the Seaport, and it's already, I think all of those will be permitted.
It doesn't go all the way down to 16, Seaport doesn't? Seaport doesn't go down to 16?
No, I'm saying, I'm saying at the north end, it seems to be redundant.
Well, the, the Seaport District in the north end goes.
Aren't we going to have both sides?
Well, it goes beyond just Main Street facing lots.
That's true.
So that's why I'm saying the MU-O should really, should really limit it to Main Street facing and 5 to 16, just as a framework.
Okay. Any other concerns that we'd like to bring to Mayor and Council?
Yes.
Yes?
Rear yard setback or bulk requirement, I mean, these all are but residential zones, so being able to build at zero is, is, you know, pretty strong. I think most, even the Seaport has a 25-foot buffer for the rear yard setback abutting the residential zone.
So let's make that our recommendation, the stable 25, Mike?
Yeah, we'll follow the 25, I think it's maybe 35.
I think, I, I, I'll go check, I'll find out what it is, we'll make sure.
Yeah, we want to be precise with that.
If it, if it butts, because it's, a butts against a residential use, not zone. It's a res, well, no, you could have something that's commercially zoned, but it's a residential use, you still want your buffer.
For the most part, you, you have the buffer, Joe.
It's on the east side, I think.
You said, you said specifically, some of us, some of us, you know, you think the wall is 50 feet, and that seems close.
Yeah, I agree, it's really the east side.
50 feet is, right? Am I correct?
I believe it's 30, 30.
30.
30, 30.
Sorry, sorry to call you after.
Let's check and make decisions.
Well, I had that circled.
I'm thinking the applications that you have at the south end with the concerns of the residents on, you know, the east side, we're very concerned as to where the, how far the development is going to be.
Right.
Because in a sense, I think one word is, you know, they're going to be up, if they're off, if they're off the Main Street, they're going to be up four stories, they're going to look down my back, you know, should not have some type of.
I mean, that's a, we can't just raise a, a lot across the street.
Yep.
So, that's the setback, the, the story, the height setback, same, same issue with me, that we're setting back 12 feet off of Main Street for, you know, aesthetic purposes, why not off of the residential sales?
Well, I think you have, you're doing, you're doing several things, you consistently develop, there are patrols who are creating, right, not in a huge way, but you're creating a sky, and you're basically doing, you're doing that so that you're not creating a canyon effect from the maze, so you're stepping those things back.
So what I'm saying is your suggestion would be, even with the 25-foot buffer, make it three and a half stories and then a 12, which is a basic gesture.
Here's a great thing, I'll just take.
That's what I would say. Well, let me ask a question of the board, does everyone agree with that 12-foot rear, you know, step back at the three and a half, the four stories?
Yeah.
I think that's a word.
Okay. So be it, pennant. Any other comments on this ordinance? Anyone? Thank you. Doug, next.
Next one, 2025-12, portable housing zone AAH. This is specifically for block 105, lot 8. As I said to you before, if there were not for a settlement provision that was going to be part of our approval process, people would look to this and say, this is spot zone, this is specifically zoning for a, a property to make it fit within our residential housing zone. This is the AAH zone, this is primarily this, I think it's 613 10th Avenue, this is east of the Steakhouse, this is that, the abandoned, I shouldn't say abandoned, this is the no longer in use drive-in, a bank, I believe that that's the property.
It was an eye doctor, I said.
Yes, we heard an application here, you have a little ATM, I'm like, that's not commercial.
Well, I think this is, I think this is the back, it may have been a change, but this is that back property to there, I think that's.
No, it's that whole property.
It's that property.
It's that property.
It's that property.
It's the whole, okay, so yeah, it's that property. So this is going to be 12 residential units, 20% set aside, 10 market to affordable, affordable is going to be one, two-bedroom, one, three-bedroom, restricted for 30 years. You have the accessory standards, permitted accessory, bulk 11,250 square feet, frontage 75 feet, parking RSIS, minimum four EV ready stalls, handicap stalls will be led by a team, and this will come under the Uniform Housing Board, it will be controlled. You've got your standards, you've got your permitted accessory uses, your off-street parking, fences, decks, residential bedding, fire cracks, solid waste recycling, classic what you expect to see in a residential building. Your bulk requirements, minimum lot frontage 75, minimum front yard setback 4 feet to balcony 5 feet to building. That's a big balcony. Minimum side yard setback 10 feet, combined side yard setback 20 feet, minimum rear yard setback 25 feet, minimum lot shape diameter 50 feet, maximum building height 45 feet, four stories, doesn't, does not look like there's a staggering here, maximum lot coverage 85%, maximum building cover 60%, maximum FAR 2.
This is part of the settlement, right?
I believe so.
So we don't want to start to talk about setbacks on the building and everything because this is already done.
Okay, there's a 20-foot rear.
Yeah, but I'm saying they don't have the 12-foot, then we just, yeah, I'm sorry.
No loadings zones required. This means development of the AAH zone is exempt from any other borough standards and applicable standards established here in. AAH affordable housing zone is specifically exempt from provision of ordinance 4060 of the design standards, built in space and residential, and that was a hookup to that for which the county is required. Any landscape zones providing a part of such areas will not be required to be certified when it's part of, it's just being, don't have to have certified individual in that. The AAH zone shall not require the buffer requirements as required by ordinance section 40-8.4 apparent E2 apparent A, I believe that's the, that condition buffer that you were talking about, but they also, they do have a 25-foot setback. And then the standards. There's not much that you're doing there with parts of the standards. Oh, I forgot about that.
I guess one question is, and it probably doesn't need to be added to this, but I know in the fourth round, there's discussion of this property on 7th Avenue with the five units, do we need to cover that with an ordinance at this point? Now, Miss Bell? All right, thank you.
Okay. Any concerns that you want me to bring to Mayor and Council in part of this one?
Concern I had was that two, oh, sorry, two out of 12 is closer to 16% than 20. So if not 20% set aside.
There's the repetitive development.
Yeah.
Yeah, but there are also, keep in mind, some of these applications are making contributions in lieu of units, right? And I'm not sure if that's the case here or not.
That's not listed.
It's not listed here. They, they are making contribution to make up for the remaining.
I don't think that would be in the ordinance. And then they can all perjury this.
Someone should be doing the math.
Right. If you'd like to come on.
So would your suggestion change that 20 to 16 so that it's accurate? Is that the real?
It's, it's 16 and two-thirds, you know, but.
I, I, I think that, I think the settlement number is already there.
Yeah. Yeah, just, you know, just because it's not.
To that, or we're going to say approximately 20%?
They're making, they're making contribution to make no difference.
Okay.
So is that, so it still makes the 20% ultimately?
Well, what we can do is attempt to confirm that.
All right, anything else? Nothing? Thank you. All right, very good.
You can take it from there, Doug. We're done. I will prepare the writing.
Okay.
April 10th, I have to have it in tomorrow, we have to have it from Mayor and Council.
That will.
And now.
So, fourth round.
Fourth round.
Miss Bell's going to come up and talk to us about that. She didn't wait in for us, thank you.
Have to see her out of boot, Miss Bell.
I do. Okay. Before we give you your credentials, let's see if we can do this relatively quickly, and I'll try to stay out of your way. Remarked the notice, PB1, remarked the proof of publication as PB2, remarked the service list, that's with the different municipalities, Avon, NCP City, NCP Township, Lake Collins, Brinkley, Wall is PB3, inclusive of the certified mailings and receipts, PB4 is going to be June 2025 housing element fair share plan, there will be exhibits there too, PB5 is going to be certified mailing the plan to the county planning board, PB6 is going to be certified mailing the office of planning advocacy and FedEx improvement regarding that. I don't have any other exhibits there already, and I can do that. I do, I do want to tell you, we have a streamlined resolution prepared, if this means we can know which group might compare, we have the, like. Okay?
Um, Miss Bell, I am a licensed professional planner in the state of New Jersey, a member of the American Institute of Certified Planners and a certified club client manager. My licensees are current and in good standing. Here in my capacity as the borough planner, I have applied for this board, board as well as many other boards.
Our committee, you accept?
We accept Miss Bell's credentials and welcome you again.
Nice to see you all again.
Nice to see you.
I feel like you're familiar with this process at this point, so I'll try to cover the important topics, but move quickly. So I'm here tonight, this is the public hearing for the housing element and fair share plan for the borough of Belmar for the fourth round, which goes from July 1st, 2025 through 2035. We were just here with the third round plan, which the third round ends at the end of this month. So the housing element and fair share plan is a mandatory element of the master plan under the municipal land use law and constitutionally obligated through the Fair Housing Act. under the Municipal Land Use Law and constitutionally obligated through the Fair Housing Act. The housing element portion of the plan may have changed slightly from the one you saw last month. I think, you know, because this was done more recently, the demographics, we have like the next year in census data, basically. But the housing element includes population trends and inventory and projection of housing staff, an analysis of demographics, including housing size, income, employment characteristics, and a review of the borough's infrastructure, environmental and historic constraints, and existing proposed land use and so forth. The Fair Share Plan is really the, the meat of the document, and that discusses the obligations put forward by the state for the borough's affordable housing and compliance with the current fourth round and all prior rounds. So for the fourth round, the state put forward an obligation of 43 units for Belmar. We did a vacant land analysis again, which basically, you know, Belmar for the most part is built out. So we did a review of parcels within Belmar, were required to look at vacant parcels, farm parcels, publicly owned parcels, and taxis of parcels. Looking at that, we were required to, as they, as part of the third round settlement, we were required to include a number of properties on Seventh Avenue. Those were really the only properties in town that generated realistic development potential. Using an average of the density of multifamily developments within Belmar, we found that those properties, we felt they could generate a realistic development potential of five affordable units. So we found that the borough's realistic development potential is up. So that's the number of affordable units that realistically could be generated for this fourth round in the next 10 years in Belmar, not that 43 number. However, we do need to provide zoning to meet approximate, to meet 25% of that 43 number. So because we just adopted, well, the third round plan, you just had your consistency review for a number of the ordinances, they're basically in place for this plan already. So the unmet need is 38 units based on that 43 perspective number, subtracting the five units we feel can realistically be provided. And to address that unmet need, we will continue to, hopefully will adopt, and then continue to enforce that mandatory set aside ordinance, and the mixed-use district overlay zoning. And those ordinances allow for the potential redevelopment of the borough's unmet need, to meet the borough's unmet need. The present need obligation for the fourth round, which is the number of units that need to be rehabilitated, is zero, so there's no rehab need to be met there. And that's pretty much it. Do you have any questions or anything for me?
I have a question. There is, some of the developers that are coming in under the third round are making contributions, and any new development, single-family development in town will also be making contributions. There's a fund obviously that will manage that. Is there any credit we get from Fair Housing for the use when those funds are utilized for any affordable housing, or is that just completely separate?
So in future rounds, right, we, if we use that money to create affordable housing units, we can get credit for them in future rounds.
It strictly needs to be creation of affordable housing?
No, it can also be used for rehab, it can be used to.
Grants, other things I saw.
Be used for a number of other things, yeah.
And then you'll get some form of credit for that against the fourth round, let's say?
The fifth round. That's probably, probably right. Because we're meeting our fourth round obligation.
Okay. All right, thank you.
And on that point, there's also an auditing function that the state engages in halfway through to make sure that the money that you're collecting, that you're actually making those expenditures.
There's a number of check homes.
Are there specific properties that this is, I know that you're calling out that your, your developable, make, developable vacant land?
Right, so when the borough was pretty far along in the process for the third round, close to, you know, using everything, we had a developer come in who is block 66, blocks 11 and 12, and block 76, blocks 4, 5, 6, 13, and 14. And they were kind of a late to the game intervener. It was, they, we did not need to include them in our third round plan because we were already through negotiations for the most part, but as part of the third round settlement, we needed to include that site in the fourth round.
On what, all right, street location.
So it, you look at.
So, yeah, so print office, office?
Yeah. It's on both sides of the street in that area.
Both sides of Seventh Avenue?
Current.
The strip malls?
It goes through.
There's a, there's something you're saying.
Um, with them being included in this round, we have a stricter, that comes before us in the review of their parking, the review of their heights and all the others.
They have not presented us with a plan yet, and.
Will be more of a traditional planning board review on those properties, other than the units that they need to provide? Just curious.
In other words, it's not a court settlement, so therefore, a lot of the development decisions were made in advance?
How can the attorney speak to that?
Let's, let's where the attorney is.
Is all this by the test, when you give the board the truth, all truth on the truth?
Your last name, Brad, please?
McMahon, M C, N A, and I am a, a friend, McMahon, and McMahon has gotten the fountain who serves redevelopment and affordable housing council to the borough. So regarding Seventh Avenue project, it is not part of a settlement similar to the third round projects like you referenced, Repetti, Sagman, six thirteen, and Markville's. So there is no settlement agreement for the seven thirteen project, so, but it will be part. They were not, they, while they attempted to intervene two times in the third round, they were denied on both occasions to be, need to intervene for the third round. But the judge required that they be included as part, in, in the fourth round, Housing Element Fair Share Plan, which is why they're in the plan as they are. As far as whether they've submitted the project, they've submitted a project in multiple forms to different entities within the borough, but they haven't followed the required redevelopment process, and the projects that they have submitted are, have been not compliant. They've been reviewed by, I believe it was, they've done a technical review through the engineering process, and they, they received a letter explaining all the reasons why the project is not compliant. So we're still in the process of negotiating what that project is going to look like.
So to the question that Mike asked, it sounds like that's going to continue to be negotiated offline, whether it's a judge settlement or not, it sounds like it's going to be Mayor and Council making those decisions. So it'll be a similar framework, we'll get the end result, whatever that might be, and have limited impact on what we can alter on that project.
Correct. Yes. Yeah.
And is there any way that the planning board could play a more active role in that process, given where we're at?
What kind, I mean, can you just elaborate on a little?
Well, I mean, classically, the planning board likes to participate in, you know, size, setbacks, density. Certainly, I know there's numbers that need to come into play in terms of how many affordable units, and I know they're going to want to play out the developer, how many market rate they need to make it a viable project, but at some point, there are decisions that are made that typically would come through the planning board, and there would be negotiations off call, and public input is part of that process. It sounds like that's not going to be the case, but if there's an opportunity for that to happen, I think it would be beneficial for the community to know that their planning board is playing a more active role than what's happened in the past.
Right, understood.
So I don't, I don't think this, this doesn't do a court settlement like we had in the previous ones, correct? The court wouldn't be involved in something like this unless they deeply stepped in.
Correct. I mean, this is, there is a D J, a preparatory judgment action that was filed in the fourth round, because that's procedurally what's required, but that is in connection with this Housing Element Fair Share Plan, not necessarily these individual projects.
So, so this might not even end up being an offer, there's no redevelopment agreement in place for that, developers, probably anyone could come in, but the, the rules that we're putting in place now are going to apply to whoever comes in to do it. So these things about the mandatory overlay, right, these are all going to be applicable to whoever might come along and want to develop that.
Yep, the main streets outside overlay, although I think this is right on Main Street, so I don't, that would apply, but it's part, it's in the redevelopment area, so it will be a similar process to redevelopment agreements, not necessarily, not the settlement agreements. So it's a similar process to.
So would be a class, and I think that's a great point, Mark, is that it's more of, if a redevelopment agreement's signed by Mayor and Council, it then moves through the process and comes back to the planning board in a classic form.
Our hands aren't necessarily tied.
Right. Because I think that's the opportunity the planning board has to participate in that process from, you know, all the points that we typically look at, and therefore, we can start to look at things like infrastructure and other concerns that we unfortunately don't have the ability to influence on the prior applications. This is where we could play a more active role.
Correct. And like Francie said, we are, we were required through the settlement agreement to claim this site as a potential for affordable housing in the fourth round, but they have not submitted a plan that we found compliant with the C Core redevelopment area, which is the zoning for the site. So it hasn't really.
That's fine. That's exactly what we want the Mayor and Council to do, because that's like any developer coming in on a parcel, they're going to want to negotiate strong on behalf of the community, and it sounds like that's the process it's going through. So we're fine, and I think it certainly, it certainly would be better if it comes through that process and it comes through the planning board as a classic application.
And by, so the fourth round, I think we spoke about it earlier, the fourth round, state kind of stepped forth this really expedited process, but the municipalities are required to adopt their housing element and fair share plan by June 30th, so the end of this month, and by doing so, then you have immunity for.
Right, then we have the protection we need.
Correct.
So, understood.
Well, we're talking to you, but the affordable housing is just how many is set aside and provided with that.
Right.
What I believe you're saying to is, classically, you're going to have, if you had a mixed residential commercial, you would initially go under the C Core standards of being reviewed, see whether it was consistent. Affordable housing, but it's still going to have residential, but it's just how those are going to be parsed for the next 30 years. It really doesn't change that planning function, it's how many units are going to be there.
Right, but I think.
And then, let me finish that. And then from there, the other, the other issue that we deal with there, then it goes to technical review, and clearly a technical review, the planning board plays a role. And if it's going to follow those standards without a change in the C Core zone, there shouldn't be a change.
Right. That's my understanding.
Right, and by adopting the plan, you have kind of closed the door to the types of intervenors or lawsuits that you end up with the settlement that we did in the third round.
All right, that was going to be my next question. So this kind of closes the door on intervenors?
Correct.
The exception of Seventh Avenue?
It closes the door on intervenors, but there's still an opportunity for interested parties to challenge the plan through the end of August.
So there's still that window.
Could be more.
Yeah, you could be an objector.
Fair share housing could object.
Yeah, I mean, that's their, I also want to emphasize.
You can get this, you can get somebody who's developing a parcel that doesn't want to go through that process, come in and object.
Yeah. I really want to emphasize the, the step of the technical review committee as well, I want to make sure that doesn't get lost in the process as well. Any other comments, questions?
The, Mr. Mayor?
Present.
I had a question about the 25% credit for the family, for family units. Is that tied to the 10th Ave development, or is that for all of them? Because in the chart, it was listed under the six thirteen tenth Ave, those bonus credits?
So that is just a typo listed twice. Thank you, I'll make sure to correct that. The overall bonus credits are the 23.
That was for, for all of those?
Correct.
So it's not necessarily anything to do with the two units coming out of six thirteen?
No, it's the combination of all of them.
So it's almost, should be a separate line, talks about bonuses?
Yeah, so it's twice, it's in total and on six thirteen, then it should not have been on six thirteen.
Got it. Anything else, or Brad?
The, the last one was, so the, the total obligation for the fourth round is, just to clarify, 43. We have a plan for five, and there is an unmet need of 38, but those 38, the unmet need is being met with the overlay ordinance and the other one, and the 20%.
Sort of.
You're demonstrating a plan. But demonstrating a plan is.
Yes, would be a problem.
The state put forth an obligation of 43 units for the Borough of Belmar. We said there's no developable, based on our review and knowledge of what's in Belmar, we can only provide five units. And we did, you know, the statutory required exercise to show that five units is the realistic development potential. So that becomes the obligation of what we need to provide, and then.
Have they reviewed and accepted that? Not yet.
Not yet. The remainder, so the difference between the 43 and the five is the unmet need. And we're statutorily required to provide, we're required to provide zoning that allows for, as redevelopment occurs, you know, the creation of affordable units. We have to show, which we had to do a build-out analysis, that the zoning we are providing can provide 25% of the unmet.
Of the 30, 30 years.
Of the 38, yeah.
Which is how many, you know, where they're.
Nine point five.
To be exact.
Half a year.
So 10, 10 units, 10 units.
Yeah.
And that does not include the five.
Correct.
So it's 10 in addition to that five.
But the, those overlay, those ordinances you just, well, the first two ordinances, you know, you just reviewed, the mandatory set aside, and then the mixed-use overlay area. So the overlay along Main Street, that, if, you know, all of Main Street was built out as mixed-use that provided affordable units, there would be more than 10.
So we can beat that out with.
Yes.
And what will happen with our unmet need in round three and all the provisions?
All the provisions, well, we met everything in round three.
So round three, we also took the B L A. So round three, we also took the VLA.
Right.
Right. But we're meeting, we've met what our realistic development.
No, it's the realistic, but do we have a carried forward number of, of the unmet need?
Little three, no?
No, yeah, there's, there's.
So nothing, so basically, at this point in time, for a go-forward basis, our unmet need.
Is thirty-eight units.
Total, since the unit of affordable housing, that's what, that's the point I'm trying to. Or is there a number that's carried from each round?
Just want to clarify, while we're looking at that, though, the borough did not combine the third and fourth rounds. Like, it kept the third and fourth round separately intentionally. So the third round is proceeding through the declaratory judgment action with the interveners. There'll be an fairness and compliance hearing before the court on June 27th to resolve the third round. And then separate apart from that is the path for the fourth round, which is what we're doing tonight. Council will endorse this tomorrow. It'll be before council to endorse tomorrow, then it's submitted to the program, and then interested parties, including fair share housing, or anyone else can object to the VLA, the RDP, and the compliance mechanisms.
By the end of August.
By the end of August, exactly right. So that's the fourth round plan. As far as settling everything, you know, we'll confirm this, but I believe through the third round, with all the settlements that were done, we addressed all of the prior obligations from the second round, the third round, and everything was wrapped up at the end of the third round after we'd been married.
It's a good question, though, it's a good question.
Yes, it is.
What about that first and second round, is there anything hanging out there?
I think the first, anything that was hanging out from the second round, from nineteen eighty-seven to nineteen ninety-nine, was fifty-nine units. And I believe all of that was wrapped into the third round, and addressed in the third round.
Okay. Any other questions? Okay, yes, please. If anyone would like to make a comment about this.
Our fair share element.
This. Fourth round. Fourth round housing plan, please step forward, state your name, spell it, and provide your street address. Seeing no one, I'll close the public portion. Can I have a motion to approve?
Let me, let me read your motion to the record.
Oh, please.
And then read this in, and then ask for a first and a second. Borough of Elmar Planning Board has used the document in 2025 Fourth Round Housing Element and Fair Share Plan and the master plan. Whereas on June, newly provided pursuant to the SA 45D, the S thirteen, Elmar Planning Board of public period, held a public hearing on the proposed 2025 Fourth Round Housing Element and Fair Share Plan of the master plan on June 16th, 2025. Whereas upon conclusion of the public hearing, we return the proposed Housing Element and Fair Share Plan will guide the use of the lands in the borough in a manner that protects public health and safety and promotes the general welfare according to the SA 45D, the S twenty-eight, and is designed to achieve access to affordable housing through the use of those fourth round mounted on constitutional affordable housing applications. We consider the lands that are most appropriate for construction and affordable housing according to state statute. Now therefore be resolved by a motion to be made, seconded on June 16th, 2025, according by adopts the 2025 Fourth Round Housing Element and Fair Share Plan of the master plan. And ask for a motion.
I make a motion.
I'll second.
Second.
Mr. Meyer?
Yes.
Mr. DeLazio?
Yes.
Mr. McThurman?
Yes.
Mr. Leslie?
Yes.
Mr. Holmes?
Yes.
Mr. Farrow?
Yes.
Senator Levens?
Yes.
Fair Montezka?
Yes.
Thank you, everyone. At this point, if anyone from the public would like to make a comment about anything, not necessarily the applications that were presented tonight, please step forward, state your name, spell it, provide your street address. Seeing no one, I'll close the public portion, and I'll ask for a motion to adjourn this evening's meeting.
A motion.
Right, a second? Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.